Meeting for the New York Council Regionals, the schools districts will be to order.
Let the leaders take the ground in the United States of America. Through the Republic of which sustains one nation, a ground indivisible, with great justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting will be tonight recorded and posted at a later date to our Facebook and YouTube channels due to technical difficulties. Alright, so we'll move on to our regular business. First, we're being is approval of the meeting minutes from March fourteenth, twenty twenty four are included under the agenda I don't. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from. Moved by Jeff, seconded by Sean. Are there any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed abstained, and I say aye. To the unanimous. Look like we have another set of meeting minutes to approve for the March twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed abstained, and I say yes, vote to unanimous. Now on to bill of the payroll. Attached, there is a warrant. In ready with.
Um, the April first H R warrant for four hundred forty seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars and eighty five cents. The April second P card warrant for thirteen thousand, six hundred seventy eight dollars and eighty four cents. The April third payroll warrant for six hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety eight dollars and sixty five cents. Uh, April fifth miscellaneous payroll for six hundred thirty six dollars and fifty eight cents. A April fifth A P warrant for four hundred six thousand, four hundred forty seven dollars and thirty cents. April eight warrant for rich for activities for nine thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty seven cents. April seventeen payroll warrant for six hundred three thousand, sixty five dollars and eighty four cents. April twenty second A P warrant, four thousand, three hundred twenty six dollars and fifty cents. And April twenty fifth A P warrant for three hundred sixty five thousand, eight hundred sixty five dollars and ninety six cents.
We need to go. Though I would entertain a motion to accept the bills of payroll warrant as presented. So that was the motion by Heather, a second by Sean. Um, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed abstained, and I vote yes. To unanimous. Alright, and now with the fun stuff, we move on to our appearances and we'll start with our student representative.
Yeah, so um, this past month, there's been a lot of stuff that's happened. Um, beginning of the month, we went to the um, prom venue, the prom committee did, you know, the tour, the prom venue, pick up the menu. It's really nice venue, it's gonna look even better when we get all the decorations in there. Um, the cheerleaders went to Hershey, Pennsylvania, the high school varsity cheer team, um, and they're national champions. So that's a really great achievement for them and for our school as well. Um, coming up, we have gap day, which is a prom safety awareness day. It's a really nice day, it's gonna educate everybody about how to go to prom and be safe and get home safe, make sure everybody has a good time. You know, this coming month is the last month for seniors, so all the senior week activities, some give back day, the chicken barbecue. Senior boss trip, which we're doing a day trip to Boston this year, doing a whole bunch of stuff, going to the whole neighborhood, Fannie Hall, the aquarium. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Um, and then we have graduation at the end of the month and the last day for seniors is May twenty second.
What's the countdown, how many more days? Um, I'm so happy that you mentioned that your team because I know that we've all been following them on social media and that's amazing that they're coming.
Yeah.
Winners, so yay to the cheerleaders. Um, and then you have, you're having your prom at Hidden Hills, right?
Yes, it was at, it's at Hidden Hills and Ridge.
That is a beautiful venue.
It is.
We need to see lots of pictures from that as well. Is there a theme or is that a surprise for everyone?
It's golden gala, uh, so it's gold and then like a mix of black and white. They're doing like a different, like, I think the tablecloths are black and then they're looking like white chair covers.
Alright, wonderful, in our next appearance, we've been waiting for. Um, we get a a presentation from our food services director, our new food services director, Michael Ornato, did I say?
So it don't have a presentation board, I just have myself, I'm going to say hello, introduce myself, my name is Mike Ornato. Um, I live just over the border in New Hampshire. I started here in January, which most of you are, well, um, I have a background in restaurants, hospitals, um, colleges. To, I've done just about everything there is in food service. Um, my, my wife is ed- in education as well, and I have a thirteen year old son, so being food service director in the school district, it's cast cans, it's perfect. I wanna, I wanna thank Dr. Cassman and Emery for giving me the opportunity to start here at the New York Council. I also like to thank my predecessor, Ed, Ed Betrazekan, a great system, it's fantastic. He knew what was gonna happen months before it would happen, and he was, he was a treasure to all of them, I, I hope he, uh, I hope he served you well. That being said, I have the opportunity, I apologize about my voice, it's allergies this year, fantastic. But I have the opportunity to just do little tweaks to what Ed has put in place, to produce some different items and increase participation and, you know, interest in the program. I wanna thank everyone in the wellness committee and mommy, uh, they've been really welcoming to me in the first meeting I was able to attend. Super organized, great to point everything, it's fantastic. Uh, and I'm looking forward to working with them now. With wellness committee's help, put out a survey, uh, last month, I think it was last month, couple of us last month. Put out a survey and we had about four hundred responses, mostly from students, that's given me a lot to work with, which is fantastic. Now I can kind of understand what the expectations are, what the students' expectations are, and even to that point, some parents, what their expectations are. Um, it's also been helped us in the wellness committee, your case best next month, which should, which should go well. Other than that, I think my voice is just about to be carried out. Uh, does anyone have any questions or anything, any information I want to go to Eliza?
I, I just have a comment, um, I, I love the inclusion of data collection as part of your process. Because I think a lot of districts are really like that when it comes to services, it's usually just for academic purposes or, you know, school culture. So I think it's great that you're involving the students and the families, um, in, you know, the tweaks that you're making.
That's, that's one of the things that I was able to pull from working for contract management companies. Always sending out surveys, it didn't matter what school, what college, what hospital, it was always sending out surveys, what do people want? That's one thing that's, uh, that's helped me. Uh, my, my whole philosophy when I go somewhere new, uh, my if I like to seek first understanding and be understood. If I don't know how things work, how am I going to fit into what needs to be done and be, am I going to fix it or improve it? So, uh, it's, it's just a great tool, thank you very much, every kid.
Just welcome, welcome, New York Council for coming, we appreciate.
Feel free to reach out to me anytime, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, I'm always willing to listen.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to public input, do we have anyone? Not look like we have anyone, let us speak, um, so that brings us to Lisa and then DeDe.
Hello, um, not much to share, just that we came back this week after a, I'd say well deserved race for everybody, um, from a staff and student. And now, what's gearing up for, or somewhere in the process of beginning second round of MCAS, so it's, um, math, math and the sciences are beginning next week. At least at the middle stool, pretty sure across the board, and then just a lot of the teachers are, you know, getting through their final units of the year. Um, just getting ready for all the end of the year activities, field trips, that kind of thing, and just very good, um. Seems like some good morale going around, so it's, it's a great thing, a lot of spring fever here in the kids, but we're, we're taking charge of that, so we'll keep them in check.
Teacher appreciation week is on the horizon, so hopefully that will recharge and create even more.
Yes, and actually, our, our student council does a, um, a teacher appreciation breakfast in May, we just met the staff who had planned it for, um, May twenty ninth. We just wanted to do it the twenty third, but then we realized that the seventh grade would be on their field trip to a college school, so we changed it to the twenty ninth, so.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Alright, now for a, um, FY twenty four budget.
Um, FY twenty four is doing good, we're starting to like wind down and double check salary, make sure everything's in line, double check lights the year long, P O's. Make sure everything is in the place that it's supposed to be, release any monies that, um, weren't used. So that we can get to our June thirty bottom line and see what we have left for next year.
And school year twenty five.
Well.
I'm a whole way down. We're in that spot where we just wait, right?
We've had a lot of great conversations. Both hands, honestly, um, we just met with a group of the finance, uh, this morning. Um, just, you know, working really hard to make sure there are communications, you know, it's. Part, we're, you know, communicating everything that we need, you know, we, we've got a chairs meeting coming up next week. And that, you know, and I've just prepared, you know, just again, to make sure we're all the same age going forward, and so we, um, you know, regardless of the tough year, which we're, like a lot of folks. I, I will say we're not as bad as, as some towns are, and that's something to be happy for. Uh, but we've, uh, our communication certainly has absolutely improved. Um, well, the last couple of years, and we're doing a lot of talking, so it's been, it's been better, but, um, again, we, it's the month, Frank, it's May, so we'll, we'll see how it all turns out.
And Emery, you're up, because next on the agenda is our business manager, Forrest.
Again, FY twenty four is winding down, we're looking at our grants, making sure that we're wanting to spend by the end of the fiscal year. Um, checking to see if anything needs to be rolled over or amended to a different category to make sure it hits the spending deadline and stuff. So, probably than that, much different than FY twenty four update.
Through, actually, like, back in break, you know, I always say that I'm a great man. Um, but I'm excited to report our wellness advisory committee has been working hard this year on two major goals. One is to continue, um, the work to solicit in- input from students into, um, school lunch programming, which you heard Mike talk about earlier. Uh, and Mike's done a phenomenal job this year, uh, really surveying and getting feedback to impact changes to your program. The other thing we're working on, um, is some ongoing efforts to, um, to design events and activities to really engage our community. We've been working on, um, embedding a walkathon event that will be part of Warrior Best Network. Um, and we're trying to create some fundraising in connection with that, so that we can start up, um, a wellness, um, pot of money. So that we can support wellness events down the road using, using those funds. Um, and then I'm excited to announce that, um, we, our district and our wellness committee is gonna be recognized at the Massachusetts School Wellness. As a Massachusetts School Wellness Champion, um, and we'll be sending a small team of folks to the John Stocker Institute of Food and Nutrition's twenty twenty four. Healthy Kids, Healthy Programs Summit, um, in late May. Um, and so Mike and I will be the attendants, and we're gonna be getting one more representative from our committee to join us at that. We have, uh, three registrations, um, as of work stands for that. Um, we're hoping that our student representative, Eliza, will be joining us, and if she's unable, I know her sports events are, are busy this time of the year. We'll be seeking another, uh, member of our committee to join us for that as well, um, so we're really excited about that. Uh, in terms of our professional development update, we had, um, we had two professional development days in the month of March. We had March eighth and March twenty eighth, um, and at both of those staff at T E S had an opportunity to continue focusing on the implementation of their core reading program into reading. Uh, and they've been working specifically on embedding strategies and techniques for early reading or early literacy skills. As well as really focusing on more individualized instruction for students to, uh, really do small group instruction, um, in more of a workshop model. So they've been talking a lot about what does that look like, what resources exist in their core program to help them with that? And how does the, um, benchmark assessment data and the progress monitoring data that they're, they're, they're really entrenched in this year? How does that help them to identify which resources to use to support students? And they've been doing a phenomenal job, um, the staff there really diving into developing action plans and lesson plans to support students. Um, at our middle school, they've been engaging in ongoing work, uh, to embed vocabulary, uh, activities across all grades and subjects. And so Miss LaFreniere has really designed a really interactive PD for the middle school this year, where the staff have really had an opportunity to share practice. And look at each other's practices, um, and kind of assess and critique and support each other, uh, to lift the level of vocabulary instruction, uh, across the school. And we've got a lot of really positive feedback on that as well. Um, and the high school similarly has also been working, um, on embedding literacy practices, both around vocabulary acquisition and use and comprehension strategies. Uh, and they've been working a lot on sharing practices, and they've been doing a lot of that work in their department teams, um, as well. So our feedback has been very positive as we wrapped up this year's PD sessions, um, from staff, we, we do, you know, end of session, uh, PD surveys. And we've got really, really positive feedback there. Uh, our parent educators are also engaged in ongoing training, they worked, uh, most recently with our, um, our O T and our occupational therapist and our physical therapist. Uh, on, on the training around, um, day to day things they can do to support students that they're working with in their classrooms. Um, and we got phenomenal feedback on that as well, so we're really excited about that. The additional training that we sent some folks to, uh, we had a small team, um, we did a teacher from the high schools, teacher from the middle school, art counselor, director, and care to myself. Attended a training on A I, uh, with artificial intelligence and how to use that as educators, both in your planning and also in your work with students. Uh, and we went to that, and I'll tell you, this team came back really jazzed up, they were so excited about what they learned. We all got to different breakout sessions depending on our roles, um, and we were, we were so motivated by what we learned and, um, and how we could use this as a tool. That, uh, the team, the teachers at the time actually said, can we meet and put together training for staff? And so the four of us, um, reconnected when we came back from training, um, and they put on a training for staff, uh, for middle school and high school staff specifically. Uh, on how to use that as a tool to support lesson planning and how do we use this, uh, if you choose to, in classrooms with students. Uh, it was very fascinating to us is how many districts, um, that were there really talked about the lack of policies that exist around this right now because it is so new. Uh, and there's a lot of work, uh, starting to be done at, at, um, uh, at the state level, so to say, uh, around policies for this. So that's something we'll be keeping our eyes open for for draft policies when they start to emerge, so that we can, uh, catch up on that as well. Um, and then last, last update I have for you is just, uh, uh, the evaluation update. I know, um, in our strategic plan, one of our goals under, um, in our objective three is around systems and structures. And it has really been focusing on getting back from COVID, getting back to our practices to support ongoing feedback to folks, um, through the evaluation process. And so, um, while our teachers have already received their mid-year feedback, if they are on one-year plans. Um, our administrators are a little bit on a different schedule, um, and so our administrators have, in the last two weeks, all received, uh, mid-cycle feedback. From, from me or Dr. Seid, or both of us, um, and we're in the process of doing those sort of mid-check-in meetings with them. Um, to talk about, you know, progress they've made towards their student learning goals, their professional practice goals and their school improvement plan goals. Uh, and then also, um, feedback, uh, around the four major standards for Desi's, um, evaluation for administrators. Um, and so we're just sort of in that cycle right now. Um, and then along those save lines attached, um, to your packet, you'll see, as a reminder, uh, you'll see the timeline for Dr. Cassman's evaluation. That we talked about, I think it was last year we talked to Dr. Seid, um, and we wanted to put this back on folks radar. Because we'll be, um, in the coming weeks, giving you, uh, evidence for his, I believe it's, I have to have that for mid-cycle, um, as well. So I'm gonna hand that over if Dr. Cassman wants to speak, um.
To the.
To that. So, May twenty twenty four.
Self-evaluation, uh, it's focused on the progress in the July one, twenty three to May, very first twenty four.
And it'll be for the formative, because his plan goes through till twenty twenty five.
But just as long as, there's really nothing more to add at all, and the evidence will be, you know, um, before we get out for the next, actually, I forget the name of the name. May second, yeah, so you'll have that too.
Maybe, we went probably second to me first, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Sorry, the first one.
That's, that's great, there was a lot of information in that. That is great, um, I appreciate the, um, uh, you know, your comments about starting the conversation about policies for A I. And I know that that is everywhere right now, um, I actually am deeply into a, uh, document that, that the Department of Education put out. All about, you know, equity in A I, and so and our staff is doing those things as well, and everyone's sort of waiting to see what are the guidelines, good policies. Just to ensure that people and students are kept at the forefront, we don't lose, um, the equity that we know teachers bring to the process of planning and differentiating and scheduling and all of that. So, and it makes, makes me feel good to know that, that, you know, New York Council is right there with the rest of the school districts, not, or, that they're thinking about the future. Any other comments?
To add that, for A I, when four of us went to the annual school committee conference in November, they felt it was so important that they made a luncheon. So, I mean, you know, everyone that was there could attend, and it was like an hour and a half or so, so it was very. I had never been a part of a workshop or, uh, introduction to that, so it was, it's fascinating, especially to have kids using this and, you know, hearing about it at home as well, so.
Well, I mean, naturally, what happens is our students are using it and our teachers are going, what is going on? I know they didn't write this essay, right? So, you know, like a lot of things, our students are a little bit ahead of us sometimes, but we're, we're catching up and, um, and it really offers, while, while I know it can be overwhelming sometimes for folks. It, it really can be a phenomenal tool, and so we're looking at that, what, what, how can we use it in our practice? And also, you know, what are some safeguards or some expectations we need to start establishing so that it's appropriately used and, and used with guidance or support? We've got work to do there.
Thank you. Great, Dr. Cassman, you're up, the superintendent's ready for it.
Thank you, manager, so, um, just a couple of, we've already talked about our grand national champions, uh, cheerleading. And so a joke, I remember last time I said, name the most successful team, um, in the history of New York Council, which they were all here, so I should have given a good hint. Um, it's obviously their first, I should say, obviously, but I mean, it's not my time to win grand national championship, which, by the way, the station is that you are the top performing team. Out of all, out of every possible divisions that are there, so something out of like thirty six different teams, so co-ed teams, college teams, uh, you know, whatever. So that's what the grand in champion, uh, is, uh, signifying, and they've done such a great job, we're just, of course, proud of them, and, um, so they're, you know, they're on cloud nine, they should. So we're, uh, obviously very, very, um, proud of them. Um, if you go to the back of the school, you've noticed, uh, you know, my central office, we've, the hard work that we've put into field upgrades, starting to actually take shape. Get banner, long fence line, and right now it's the baseball field that is, um, that shows the most work. Adjacent to that is that you see, uh, what used to be a new forest is now missing, because we've got it removed. And we'll be putting hopefully practice fields and what we hope, um, to be a, uh, softball field, uh, there as well. It's, it's been a very well, uh, not so well hidden secret, uh, that there are issues, or one could contend that there are issues with timeline. Not that we don't offer, but because softball's located where it is in terms of, uh, uh, Gill, the, we've, they, they have to travel, no one else does. So, um, it's been something we've been chasing for quite some time and we'll, and we're progressing towards that, so, I mean, it looks, it looks great back there. Facilities folks, um, have done a wonderful job. Um, coming up next week, uh, we have a tiered folk, well, it's the end of it, we've been in the grips of a tiered focus monitoring for special education. The best out of all three, four, or five months, seems like three years, um, but ultimately they come in and, uh, test the systems, look at our records and look at our, in this case. Program and we'll get a report out at the end of next week, I think it's, I wanna say it's Friday.
Um, they're gonna be here Tuesday and Thursday.
Thursday, right, so Thursday's when they'll report that out, so we, we're, um, excited to hear what they have to say. I'll actually let this slide talk a little bit about this, but we've, uh, more about this, but we have a gap day coming up, which is, um, it, it, this is turned in, uh, has gone from just like, hey. Talk to kids about the importance of not drinking and driving and, you know, and, you know, officer Fliss, remember coming to speed to like any traffic dance that it is. And I know this slide explained literally the, um, twenty eight hours of activities that she has, um, literally has stuffed into four or five hours, um, I've been marked.
Well, gap day started because I've been an advisor for several senior classes, and I would see them come, see our, our wonderful fire department, police departments come, give their presentations. But the kids just weren't engaged, they were, you know, sleeping half the time. So they weren't really taking the presentations seriously, of course, these guys aren't trained for, to interact with kids the way we need to, so, um. So I took it, took the project and ran with it, and we've been building on it and building on it. This year, not only are our local police and fire coming, our cert team is coming, state police is coming with an activity that can't be disclosed at this time. Because we have a senior in the room, um, we have the K nine unit, we have Pathways for Change coming to talk about consent with the kids. We have, I don't know what to listen from, but we have several activities taking place, um, it's going to be an exciting day. And we'll have cookout, the store now is, uh, putting together a cookout for us, it's gonna be fantastic. And there's a second treat that's gonna be coming to go with that cookout, so the kids are gonna be in for a very engaging educational. Um, now, I'm just learning about the news and notes about, you know, prom, this is gonna carry our seniors into college. You know, the, I mean, we all know, I mean, let's be real here, the kids go away to college, doesn't matter if you're nineteen. So you've just gotta prepare them to make the right choices. So you've just gotta prepare them to make the right choices or either choices that you can make impossible. So, that's, that's the goal.
Thanks, honestly, it's gonna be fantastic and um she's outdone herself once again, that's saying something. We, on May seventeenth, we will be holding, it's a, it's a half-day, it's a professional development day. Um but on that day, we're going to hold a vendor uh health fair um and. What that'll also do is start the onboarding process um for our new insurance um that we've been talking about it quite so bad. So it'll give folks the opportunity to not only uh, you know, view all of the, really the wonderful uh. opportunities they have just with our insurances and what they can do with uh, what they get access, but they'll also get, receive some help if they have. If they needed in terms of onboarding to the new um health insurance um uh program, insurance policy stuff, so. We're very excited about that, also, we're gonna take our opportunity, we've done this last couple of years, is that um there are so many days during the year, like. Professional day, uh principal day, principal month, business administrator month. It's, it's almost impossible to kind of keep up with it, so we oddly enough, motion superintendent. And so I just wanted to sort of, but um that uh so we, what we do is we save it up for one whole day and thank them. Thank everyone for all the wonderfulness that they uh provide, uh you know, not only to students but for the district. And so Mike will be putting on a lunch as we talked about and um and, you know, it's really just a day to certainly take care of some business, but to celebrate um. Celebrate our staff, certainly deserved. I know that folks, I'm sure folks have heard of the US News ranking, you know. So generally speaking, here's the golden rule, you don't ever bring it up if you didn't do well. Um and you bring it up when you do do well, uh because, fun honestly, the measures that are. It 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 is, they're they're benign at times and you really don't know exactly, you know, what happens to apples. But in this case, I will tell you, um that if I'm talking about it, then we must have done pretty well, and we did. So um we, we were ranked eighteenth out of, this is Worcester Metro. This the way, there were sixty-four districts that are assigned to Worcester Metro District according to the U uh US rankings rankings, we came in eighteenth. Um and I won't tell you who we did better than, but everybody, so I won't tell you because that would be um. We, we've, uh we're ranked one hundred and twenty-one out of four hundred and five um high schools. Um in the state of Massachusetts, that is, that has afforded us the um. That one of the best high schools um. You know, uh practice that we could, we could add to our website, we could actually, you know, order one. But ultimately, what I want to make sure is putting out here is that, okay, measures are measures, when they took, when they took these um. These uh, these variables and you compared them to, to everyone, we did really well. Um I would tell you that we would do very well regardless, and we do, but college readiness is an area that we, we really worked hard on. And we were ranked a hundred and fifth in the state. Uh in terms of college curriculum, which is really around AP scores and who took them and passed them. Um and a hundred and ninth out of the state for seniors who actually took AP tests, so. The point I'm making is that, you know, academically, we continue to make um progress. And we've made some really good strides and look, if they're gonna put something out of ranking um high schools and districts, then. Yeah, I'm in, uh because I want to see how we um how we do measure up, not only locally but across the state, so certainly um. Feather the cap to uh to our staff, um who do all the real, the real work. Um yesterday, speaking of day, days, yesterday was the day of Susan, or otherwise known as Admin Assistant. Uh, you know, Appreciation Day, she was showered with gifts um and just hundreds of folks coming, well-wishers, et cetera. Um and so, but we joke a lot, Susan, she runs the district, everyone knows that, uh but she will certainly want to uh, you know. Formally and publicly state, you know, all the great work that she does, keep me in line, uh the district running, um so uh, but. You know, my flowers are better than Melissa's flowers, so. You say that from the right. Um other than that, Madam Chair, I think that is it for my role.
So I have somehow gone on a word and I apologize to the committee and to all of you, um but I think. We might want to just finish this section and then go back, so um the out-of-state field trip is the final thing in this, in the superintendent reports section. So let's take a look at that. Um it's like a, can I be late?
If they can get our students to do all those things on that field trip, I will love it even more.
That's just what, all the things that are options, I am not a pro.
And you get them to do like, you know, ten.
It's actually hard to do all the rides in one day.
A lot of good questions, if you actually scroll through all thirty-six pages of it, there, you know, if somebody's been to Canterbury Lake, there's great questions on it, that I like. I'd like to know the answer to that.
Our education.
I have absolutely no questions that are concerned about this field trip. I would entertain a motion to approve the sixth grade out-of-state field trip to Canterbury Lake on the date of June fifth, twenty twenty-four. So that was motion by Sean, second by Shauna. Um are any comments or questions? All in favor? opposed, abstained, yes, unanimous?
Yay.
Yay. My, my only question is, can I come with you? I have a couple of personal days left too. All right, so then I will go back to the new business section, which I initially skipped over before. So we do have some surplus items that we need to vote on. Spreadsheet, um it looks like they were all MacBooks.
I can speak to that a little bit. Jared is going through his inventory and he provided a list of old MacBooks. He has contacted a company, he works with a company that will purchase that form from us. Most of them are not usable at all.
When I would entertain a motion, the attach list of very old and broken, beyond repair MacBooks. Easily sold to a company that buys old MacBooks to recycle. It was a motion by Sean, second by Cal. All in favor? opposed? Yes, unanimous? And now we move on to the superintendent evaluation cycle plan.
So I believe you have the agenda. And I think we did, we've, we've talked about this a little bit minutes ago. But um next, our next meeting. I'm not, I'm looking, I want to make sure I got this right, but our next meeting is when the uh, I will be submitted. My narrative and of course the evidence to support. The goals thus far, work is truly done. And then if you, again, if you can take another step down in June, what the committee will do. Um at a meeting to be determined, obviously, is that you'll uh, the school committee will complete mid-cycle formative. Evaluation, which will focus on performance, progress and establish goals based on the evidence from July one to June thirtieth, which will count. And then uh. Yes, so you'll rate my the performance and progress on that as.
Am I missing something?
I just wanted to go back on the new business, um the end of the year event schedule.
Yeah, I didn't know if you want to do that, yeah.
It's, it's attached, there's two different schedules attached, um and they're highlighted. Um for the school committee.
So you mean the next one underneath the superintendent evaluation. Okay, so we have our schedules here.
I take everything back to what I said.
Oh, one for school committee and then the funnel?
Yes.
Okay.
And just they're highlighting, so the blue ones are ones that they would, you're invited to go to if you'd like to, and the yellow ones are the ones that they would really like to.
Okay, so we have priorities first. Anybody have any questions about? All right, Susan, is that, are we good?
Do we need to um say that we're coming to these before we go?
Yes.
Sure.
There's a response today that they need to go out for like dinners and things like that.
Although I did respond that I would come into the. Twenty-ninth of back, right, service, that's not red, it's not, might not.
When honestly, John Beal's in schedule, he was waiting to hear back there, decided which church they were going to go to, he was gonna get back to some of that, so as soon as I know.
Oh, but the senior banquet that seemed late.
Yeah.
And there, there's time, right, to go online together, because the seniors are also going from that too.
Oh, okay, I could probably come to that one.
Forty-five minutes max.
All of these events are fantastic, um last year I enjoyed, you know, attending all the ones that I could and it's just so exciting to see the seniors. You know, and they're like, and their final days and and connecting with their families and the community. You know, there's probably a ton of work that goes into the planning of all of these and it's greatly appreciated.
I just agree.
So if I have not missed anything, it looks like. We are at the section where we address any items that are not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I think that there are needs that come up.
Do we need to vote on school choice?
We have the school choice.
School choice is under the super, oh wait, never mind, you're right, school choice.
Susan, you've spun us out of control.
No, it's my fault, I skipped a section and now I'm just bouncing all over the place.
Is as if we've never left, the, the uh, we're talking about school choice enrollment, so um. Normally, you know, we talk about how much school choice students we have, et cetera, it's our enrollment. And that's important, when you have that, um we, you know, in the end, but. Really, the bigger conversation is that the uh, the school committee uh decides really two very important things. One, whether or not it's going to be a school committee that accepts school choice students, just. Never mind numbers or where, just the, you know, just the simple fact that we are, i- if we're going to accept uh school choices in this district. Um just as a reminder, Mary, you cannot vote or the decision cannot be not to be a school choice sending district. Uh that's been asked a few times, but this is a school choice receiving district kind of question, okay? The other part, usually when we, we speak to this, is we look and you, I give numbers, exact. What classes, what, I mean, pardon me, what, what groups, what, what grades next year can in fact. You know, by my estimation, take school choice students. As, uh just as a reminder, um that we have not taken currently, well, the last four years anyway, have not. Received the school choice students at the elementary. And it's really been at the middle and high school, you know, we've talked certainly about what our student population is there, of course, that's sure numbers. There's the reality though, that at the very least, I need, we need to. Replace the students who will be graduating are in fact school choice students. For all the reasons that we talked about during the budget, because we have very real bills coming out of that revolving account. And that we have to make sure that we um stay on the uh the positive side in terms of um. So, what I'd like to do, if at all possible, in seeing that we are. We are meeting next week for sure, is I'd like to. Deliver that information at that time, in terms of what grades that. I think if we, you know, were, you know, take school choice students in, um what grades and by how many students. That we would accept, we've done that, we've done that for the last five, six years, that's, that is not something new. And I'm sure, you know, a discussion will ensue at that point, but um we generally shoot for more than just breaking even. Because although we open up X amount of seats, generally cannot, mostly because of the grade level. Um that we're able, grade levels, wherever they may be, are able to take students, um folks are interested um. In having their uh, their child enter into that group, right, into that grade at that time. If we have, if we opened up the elementary, that would be a whole, that would be a whole other conversation, which I'm not suggesting nor. But, Madam Chair, if we could, we could hold off till next, then I'd have a better, a better view. Um as to uh what that would look like, of trying to get as close to. Which, which will not happen, but a kindergarten enrollment. Always, always a moving number, um just because we, you know, we're coming to, well, when is the last day you can roll? For kindergartens, at the end of the year?
The twenty-fourth is the last day you can fix your packets.
So we'll have a better, the twenty-fourth will just, you know. Yes, so we'll, we want to make sure that we have as much time, space where we are kindergarten. Uh still a lot of ways about like what might be coming in terms of elementary in general, in line just here. So we then. We'd like to move that, the votes for both, truthfully, um till next week, during next.
I, there was not a motion attached to this at all, so that's fine. Questions about moving it? We have an agenda meeting tomorrow, so we'll make sure to put that.
Absolutely.
The agenda for our next meeting, which I can't believe is next week, it's the week after. Now, we are actually at the part of our meeting where we talk about any items that have come up in the last forty-eight hours.
Well, I do, actually, I spoke with a parent. This morning and. If they were going, I think that many of the parents were going to come to here tonight, they, they may come next week, I'm, I'm not sure. Um but after speaking, I think that they'll um, they'll hold off for a bit, but. We've, I've had more than one handful for sure, who've talked about. Currently have ninety-six, ninety-seven kids out for track right now. Um over the last four years, we've averaged, I don't, I don't know, but well in the eighties in terms of outdoor track, especially in the spring, spring track. Um and, you know, the track is unusable uh in terms of any type of competition, the MIAA has already told us, this is all, it's not a new story. Um but they're, they're looking. At, questioning like what can we do about the track ultimately? Um and as I explained, uh that much of what we need to do. Is very expensive and we could not, as a district, even if we wanted to, we could not borrow the money that it would take. To fix the track on our own, like as we've done with the field that we're going to be replacing. Um or, you know, literally replacing in July, so the field actually has to be done first, it's in the middle of the track, it makes sense. What's gonna happen though, those very large trucks are going to, we know this, we've known this, they're gonna go over the track in order to. Do what they've got to do, they've got to fix the drainage, which may very well mean that they'll need to dig through different sections, different various sections of the track. In order to make all of that work. And I explained all that, but what I believe is forming is truthfully a. Um track, you know, parent group, um they, they're, they were pretty adamant, very, very appropriate. track, you know, parent group, um, they, they're, they, they were pretty adamant, very, very appropriate, but they really are looking to get organized and to look at what can be done about replacing. So, what we're gonna do, I don't know that we'll get this done by the time, in fact, I can almost get on to you, that will not be done by next Wednesday, but we already have a pretty, um, detailed report from two thousand and nineteen, prior to us really getting into the throes of COVID, about what it would cost and what was needed to be done with the track itself, and a very, very, very rough, uh, quote, um, was given. We're gonna be reaching out to that company again, because it's been, well, almost five years since then, you gotta know the quote has gone up considerably. But we, we have some, we have different questions that we're going to ask in terms of what can be done, what should be done. Our facility director went out to watch us, it, um, I don't know, several months ago, and they had basically redone a lot of their athletics and got, gained a lot of information from them. I gained a lot of, um, vendor information. We are already on the waitlist for one of them to come out to look at the track, but they were six to eight months out in terms of work, so we, we do contact them occasionally, go, hey, how we doing? And they go, well, we're still, we'll, we'll get to you when we do. So the wheels have been in motion for a bit, um, but the call happened today, and, um, I wanted to make sure that I just alerted, I guess is the word, but just notified the school committee that there are parents who are looking to, um, you know, and very seriously looking to, uh, looking to about replacing, fixing, whatever it might be on the track.
Uh, then we can go on to school committee comments. You know, anything that they would like to comment on our share, please.
So, I just thought that beginning the communication, I forgot, or, but there is a play, sneakers, here in our auditorium, it's, uh, you know, games of theater guilds, it's, uh, primarily baseball students, but there's a small handful of the school, um, students who are portraying various new play. Um, and it's this weekend, starting tomorrow, it's opening night, six-thirty in the auditorium, six-thirty Saturday, and then the matinee show is on Sunday. So, all are welcome.
They've worked so hard to get to this point where the performance is here.
Yes.
On to sharing the other stuff committee reports. Can start with finance and facilities. Jen's not here. I will lose, I was at that meeting, I'm trying to ring them. We don't have access to the meeting, what did we talk about? I mean, it's all, it's all budget lately, just talking about the, the, um, you know, the, the waiting part of this, and we'll have a town meeting.
Right. We talked about the videos, which I also did not, um, playing, and video on there, but.
There was a rough draft of the video at that point, um, paying what could happen and what the committee will, uh, when, if the budget comes back to us, or, you know, what we potentially, um, be faced with.
That's about it. So right now it's a waiting game, the, the warrant has been obviously approved and it's set, um, and we're just now waiting for the town meetings.
Yeah, our facilities update was basically everything that we just talked about with, you know. Clearing field. How about labor management?
Well, it's only actually just been it.
Today.
October, yeah, so it's fresh, it's fresh, but you know, it's hard to see, you know, it's also executive session, but, um, the easy part to say is that, you know, it's relationship staying good, um, you know, being able to work on small ticket items, um, conservative, they come up. Um, just keeping, you know, nice, open conversations. Committee of the OCW, um, we're continuing to meet monthly. I think it's similar to labor management, where all parties are glad that these meetings are happening. You know, um, talking about contracts that follow or gripes, grievances, um, it's just a really, I think, I hate to say this word, but like a safe space to just talk about all things and know that we're all in it to make better for the students, the teachers, and everyone. So, um, I just think it's a nice, you know, I know we've said this, but I think it's just a nice piece that really came out of negotiations, um, last spring, so we all, we'll have one meeting in May to wrap up the school year, um, I don't know if we're having one issue, um, and then we'll continue once the fall comes around.
Great, thank you. Uh, and you are also early in CPAC.
So, let's so as, um, Dr. Cass, Dr. Cassidy mentioned, um, that Desi is coming out next week, so as a part of that, um, myself and then a few other CPAC members, we joined this, um, Zoom meeting. It was a quick info session about how the district special education civil rights practices are reviewed. Um, it was open to parents as well, but it really ended up being CPAC members, and I just thought that was really nice to invite parents, um, in that way, and, um, again, this is a review that's done every three years, the last review was on the Desi website, so if people want to look at that, and, um, go get another report about, um, review next week. That's just interesting to be a part of that, and then the next meeting will be Monday, May sixth, again, we're having it in person, so it'll be here at the high school.
Bank account, which was under the previous treasurer, Dana is now closed, and we've opened up a brand new one. Katie is our treasurer right now. Her last name is blinking on me, but, um, we also have, um, backup as like Penny is like on the account, and so we have a couple of people that can access that account now. Um, our current balance is seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. We have set aside three thousand for the theater at the mall, which the kids have already attended, and fifteen hundred, uh, per field trip. For each of the grades. Our square one art made seven thousand and four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents in sales, and see feedback was different artwork options that we can upload our own artwork in the future, possibly, and order something that kids want to make. Um, the fourth grade field trip was approved, uh, the preschool field trip was requested and approved, um, the fourth grade was fifteen hundred, and the preschool field trip was one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, we saved a little bit of money there. The fourth grade celebration dance is on June eleventh from six to seven-thirty. We are looking for some volunteers. We're looking into some economical choices for gifts for the kids. We are thinking about a karate night, um, possibly on June seventh, or Nerf gun play night, um, night on June eighth. Uh, probably a thirty-person cap for in-house events. It's gonna be drop off ten to thirty dollars. Oh, this, none of this is set in stone yet, these are all just ideas. Um, we did have the ice skating event, which was very well, um, attended, and, uh, again, this, uh, my notes were written before the event had happened, but we had about seventy-nine family show up. Um, and that means like, you know, each family had about four people, so, um, it was very well attended. We, I think the ice skating rink had wanted to like charge us more for like our, our lazy body, um, cleaning or something, but they went with their original quote, so we didn't have to like lose any money there. And, um, let's see, math night is May seventh from five to seven, um, we are using, I'm sure we're going to the middle.
Leave it to the middle.
Okay, thank you. And then see our next meeting is actually on, on May first, and it's also our next at five, and, oh, one last thing, um, we left all this, the, the teacher members off of this information, but all of the parent members for PTO are putting on a luncheon for the, um, Timson Elementary School staff. Uh, we're not just gonna, you know, say teachers, but the whole eighty of them, eighty or more, we're gonna do like, um, some deli sandwiches, waters, chips, desserts, all this stuff, so, um, that is coming from the parents. And that will be on page eight. Thank you. Um, so Jen is our student advisor, liaison for Student Advisory Council, um, so we'll have her report things you're going at our next meeting, um, and then I am our legislative representative, and in the interest of time, I'll just focus on a couple of, of key things going on, um, in the legislature right now, and it's all focused around funding, um, we have a lot of districts who are really struggling with um, trying to meet the needs of their students based on the chapter seventy money that they're, that they're receiving, um. The MSAC has been very vocal about supporting, um, all effective to do with increasing, um, the inflation index, so that schools are actually getting funds that that, uh, you know, address the costs that are increasing because of inflation, um, as well as changing for people expenditure that we've this year from thirty dollars to a hundred dollars per student, um, to kind of cover some of those costs that are increasing. Um, and then everyone still has an eye to what's going to happen with the, uh, tax requirement by degree of admission. So there's, there's a lot going on, it's important to make sure that we're reaching out to our representatives to make sure that they know that, um, funding of our public education systems is so important, we need to make sure we're looking at how we do that, um, so that it's equitable for all districts. Okay. Do we have any correspondence? So our next meeting, um, is scheduled for Wednesday, May first, five-thirty. It is a change from May second. Uh, do we have an executive session, or do we, do we want to, do we have anything that needs to be shared before? I know you're coming in now, I'm guessing it's, uh, cheerleader related.
No. I know, so we, do we need to make a, a motion or a, I don't, please explain.
Yeah. Would that be appropriate?
We make a motion.
Hear them? Yeah. It's an open, because I mean, they, they came here, I'd like to hear them.
It's an open, uh, agenda.
All right, so then, um, yeah, so we can hear, all you need to do is just let us know your name and.
Sure, do we need to stand up for me first?
Stand up from there, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, my name is Hillary Longley Martinez, um, I'm a parent of a student, actually two students, in the Narragansett, um, community, and this is also Jackie Gould. She is also a parent and also a track coach.
Yeah.
Um, so we just wanted to kind of come in here, um, I know that I think we have a lot of concerns about the possibility of maybe the track being ripped up, um, and we are just kind of here to speak on behalf of that. And just not only say please don't do that for many reasons, but also we want to kind of speak on behalf of the kids. We want to give them an opportunity to, I mean, track is huge. There's ninety-two kids that are part of track between middle school and high school this year, and, um, I know the track is not in good shape, but every other town around here has a beautiful track, and why can't we? I just, I think it has an opportunity to be great for not only our schools, it can bring in revenue. If we have track meets here, you're saving on bus transportation, because our kids always have to do track meets in other locations. Um, and like I said, I mean, the kids are bringing in, there's, you know, fees that they have to pay in order to participate, and most of those right now are going towards bus fees and things like that. So we just want to speak on behalf of the kids, we want to know what we need to do, not only as parents, but the community, it would be an asset to the community as well. Not only to our students, so we want to know what steps we need to take in order to prevent at least the track that is there, it is obviously not in perfect shape by any means, but if we can at least hold it until we know what to do, otherwise we're displacing all of the hits for track, and there's not another location to run except around the school, and that be also becomes another safety issue.
Man, she, if you want to, first of all.
Yeah, we already sort of talked about this, because we anticipated that this.
Yes, well, and apart, we just came from a track meet, so.
So as I was thinking about this this year, I we just, I discussed the, the board, because I knew that there might be some folks here, we weren't sure, but I received a phone call today, and, um, about the track, about all of that. And, you know, it dispelled a few of the rumors, I think that, um, like most rumors, they just enough truth in it to, you know, to almost sound plausible, but, um, one, it was a something about that the track was going to be ripped up completely, and it was going to be basically lawn put down. That can be attributed to me, uh, because at one point, when we were talking about all the just everything track, um, if, if, if it, if it could not be fixed in the way that was safe for kids, eventually you might want to do that, so you can put it in the playing field now. So let me just say that it was never going to be, or we're just gonna rip up the track and put a bunch of, you know, grass there. Uh, so it was never, that was, that was, in terms of, of not and I said this to the parent I spoke with today. We are no matter what we've done, we have to fix the mid, the field first, we have to fix inside before you fix the track. And I think that we all understand that. Um, there's, they're going to depending on the size of the trucks and how heavy, but they're going to be big, I'm sure, um, that there's going to be certainly a portion of the track that's going to be driven on, there's no way around it. Part of the plan that we've, that we'll start first week of July, is that it'll fix the irrigation, so if you, if you've never been down there, it, it's in terrible shape, but basically from the track, it drops down to some irrigation, and that has to all be leveled, it has to be fixed, because it's, it's not doing what it's supposed to do. I don't know what work nor do they yet, uh, it's going to take to fix those, so there may have to be some, some digging, uh, you know, either under or through or around the track itself, because we have to fix the drainage. Uh, I, to what extent, I do not know, like, I just won't know that until we actually speak to the folks who are doing the work, um, they know that the track is not going away, but they also know that, uh, that the, you know, the track is not going to have a meet anytime soon on it, because we can't, um, for example, so, um, beyond that, what we spoke about is that, uh, that I know that there there's a lot of interest around the track. Um, and there has been for a couple of years. It's going to require, no matter what it takes, we, uh, as I shared with the committee, um, we had a pretty extensive report done about the track in two thousand and nineteen. Actually, we received a very, very rough quote for just the track fixes, and it's, it's three or four pages of just what's wrong with it, what needs to be done, what should be done, et cetera. We're on the waitlist for a company that builds tracks to come out to verify, basically that will work, but to update the, it was five years ago, so you better know that the quote is whatever it is. Regardless of what the money is going to take, it, it's going, it's beyond the district's capacity to borrow for, it's just too much. We can only borrow up to a certain amount of money, and we just borrowed that amount, because we just paid off the leaders, um, and we're now fixing the, the inside, the, the, the field, because that's not playable as well, right? So what needs to happen, this is, that was the question that was asked of me earlier today, is that there, from my perspective, that need, there needs to be a for lack of a better word, but probably actually, if you're going to raise money or to do anything, and there needs to be a track booster club. And it has to be a five oh three C, the whole thing, if you're gonna take money, you've got absolutely, it's gonna be a nonprofit. We have several of those in the district already, the basketball team has one, football, I think it's football team, I don't know, but we have them, um, we have enough, you know, we, we've we have people who could do, oh, the cheerleaders are, are probably the best example of, um, in terms of what they needed to do in terms of do that, I think that that's step one. Step two is that, um, when I say organize, we need to we're doing the work of trying to figure out what can be done. The question is, how much of that base needs to be replaced? It isn't about the rubberized top, that's, that's, that's short money. The bigger issue is the base itself, and if it's been compromised, which it has. The bigger issue is the base itself and if it's been compromised, which it has. Um, that, does, does that mean the entire base has to be ripped up or can it be done like a road in sections? But that, that's a question that we need to, of course, we need to ask. Two, we need to get rid of standing water, so when you run around the duck pond there on the back corner or the front corner, depending how you look at it. That's gonna go away because obviously water seeps, just like roads. So we know that there are things that need to be done, we just don't know if it's a complete overhaul or could there be a way? I- is there a way to make the track uh, usable in all facets, not just for practice or for walking on? But for competitions, et cetera, without redoing the whole thing. The only folks who can actually answer that or speak to that are the engineers and the. Root tracks thing for real, so. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna wait, you know, for organization to happen, we're, again, we're on the waitlist for this. They're six to eight months out, these people who build tracks, we need another eye, we need another opinion to come out on behalf. Uh, because it just only makes the most sense, and plus something this big would require us to go all free. We'd have to put it up to bid, we'd have to do the whole, the whole thing, that again, that we are so far down the road, you know. We are, we're ways away from that, what are we doing immediately? Well, the conservation. Preservation Committee is coming up to visit with me on Monday, um, and they're lovely people, let me just say that for the record. Um, I'm, I'm joking because there's members, it's most spouses on the, on the committee. Uh, what we're asking is that, um, they, I don't know the parameters, you know, around what the. The Conservation Innovation Committee can do, but they've done such things as um, upgrade Gilman Field when they had to move the baseball field. Um, they, they can do those type of things, um, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and right now we've got two things that we need to ask. We've got, I mean, you know where I am, but we've got the field that we're building next to um, the baseball field. Um, why is that paramount? One, because there's no space, no space to practice at all on this uh, on this campus. Two, I mentioned it earlier, from my perspective, I think it's a headline issue because the, 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 uh, the girl softball players have got to go Gilman. Wait to play their varsity games, so we, we, that, that's part of our, our question or ask, et cetera, that's, that's what's gonna happen there. The other question is that what can it do for, for tracks and field and those type of things, I don't know, these are questions I'm going to ask. Um, but either way, it's gonna require, from what I understand, both kind. Um, because we are a region, so. The Philston, you know, Conservation. The city protection, uh, Preservation Committee and the, a- again, this is all, these are all questions, so we're, we've been very active, we've been very. Aggressive with trying to figure out what we can do without, I don't know, spending quote-unquote taxpayer money, coming out of money out of pockets. So there's a lot of unknowns, I think that uh, the first unknown is, well, the first thing is that the track's not being ripped up just to be ripped up, it's not happening. Could it be damaged in order to fix the field inside because the drainage is absolutely unusable? I, I don't know, I don't know, um, so they'll, I'll know that in July. But, you know, I, I can't, and couldn't we fix it that quick after that? No, no, because we'll, we'll have to go out to bid. I, do you see what I'm saying? So I, you know, we're, we're trying to do this in stages because it was the only way that we could do it. And we could not fix the track first anyway, because the field in the middle cannot be used. We need, we need, we need that, we need fields, so.
Can I make a comment? Um, I was just wondering, um, are we, do we have, or do we have access to someone who is a grant writer and, um?
You do.
Okay.
We have folks, no, I joke, we, we have folks who.
Okay.
They break a lot of brands, a lot of big brands, but this would be something they probably go through personally, I don't know.
So. For what it's worth, I believe the town has one too, that you should look into, I believe they just hired.
They did, okay.
That.
Yes.
I believe.
Okay.
So.
Grace Curry, yes. And if, if I could just interject too, so if we have to potentially co-op with another school next year because. If there's construction going on and we don't have attracting. I just want to put in perspective that right now we need three classes to move those children, four days a week, minus meet day. And that's five thousand dollars a week. That we would have to spend to move those kids back and forth just for practice.
Co-op becomes an issue because the only way you can co-op is if in fact. The team that you join or the team that you are does not have enough to in fact run a team. So that becomes, we, we were trying to co-op with Winchita years ago, um, and we couldn't do it, why? Because. Both schools had enough. Kids or participants to actually have a track, so I think that's problematic, you're absolutely right about the cost. That's something that's gonna have to be, we'll have to discuss that, um, there's no way that the district can afford five thousand dollars a week in terms of transportation. That might be, you know, that'll be something that we'll have to look at and talk about, I don't know, before we get too, too ahead of ourselves, I, I don't know what. What if any, um, uh, damage will be done to the track as a whole, I just don't know yet, and I, I get a lot trying to, I. I've gotta assume it's gonna be some, but I, I don't know how, how much, I just don't.
President, can I just ask a few just clarifying questions, um, so currently students use it to practice. But it's not suitable for.
It's enclosed by the money.
I know in the past you've mentioned that kids, you know, we didn't want to risk a student getting injured. But, but there are current students on there, is it fall and spring, is it, like, how many seasons of track do we, do we have?
So I can use it, so we have, uh, Cross Country uses it.
Okay.
I mean, the football team uses it to run laps as well, so it uses bike sports, um, we use it for winter track as long as there's. It's not cold enough outside, we're out there in winter track, and if not, we're running in the hallway upstairs. Um, and then first run track, as soon as that snows off of it, and they're on it, it's also open to the public at night. Um, you know, I find pacifiers going there and random stuff like, it's, it's just, it's open to the public as well, so.
So it's here, okay.
Yeah, I mean, and if we didn't go to another school and move, I mean, we're having kids run down. About to come in and stuff, ninety children, somebody's gonna get hit. And that's gonna be an issue, or, you know.
Safety issue.
It's certain. Yeah.
And, and, I mean, just to that point of running on, I mean, I pick up my kids and I see the students running. But I also watch the select board meetings and I know that there's issues with dogs running off of leashes and out of yards and there's a lot of issues. And so that's a concern that I have as well for our students, they want them to be safe in all kinds, so yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just think like, you know, we've gotten quotes and you said that from two thousand nineteen, like, there's just so many unknowns, like. When are we going to know? Like, what's going to happen next year because a hundred kids are asking.
I can tell you honestly, just not, not that I know what the condition of the track will be, because I don't know.
Right.
I, I won't know that until July, you know, or August, or whatever the case may be. Um, but I can tell you that whatever we, whatever we do find out, won't be in time to do anything to the track. So in other words, it, there's, just that, uh, we got quotes tomorrow, I mean, the last call, the last call we got in two thousand nineteen. And it was around, it was around seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, or something to that, to somewhere around there, I don't know. Um, so I, I gotta assume that it, it's gone up since two thousand nineteen, I'm just gonna make that. You know, but I don't know what needs to be done, that's why we, we need to get professionals out there to say, okay, yeah. That, that's gonna be changed up, but that doesn't mean you've got to change the base, because there are things like you take all of it. Ground it up and it becomes your base, like there are things that you can do with existing tracks that they do. Um, but it depends on how, how deep the base needs to be or is, we, we have an idea that it's not. It was not set deep enough and that is why it moved, and so which, which lends folks to believe that it might need to come up completely. That's all cement, that's where the money comes, right, and that's where the engineering has to be, et cetera, so we, we just don't, we, we do know. Because we have, we, you know, we've had that one report, um, but we, we're trying to get it more updated, hoping to see if we can. You know, within reality, fix it well enough, but, but not spend, you know, money just to, um, in five years have to replace it. We're, those are the kind of things that we need to know better.
Yes, and how, how do we go about that? I think that's why we're also here, it's like, what steps can be within the community, we as parents, we as teachers. We as, all of us coming together to take the next step.
The, the next step.
Help with the process.
The next step, we, we would have to do the bid, we'd have to do all of them. Benders, et cetera, because it's, it's a district, um, some of the others.
You're, you're probably talking both town involved.
In both towns, I've got it.
When, when does that part happen? When, the part that you're talking about right now, when does that part happen? Like, when is the school going to call somebody?
We've, we've called. We're, we've been waiting three months for them to come out, these companies are six to eight months out, according to them. Um, and we've called multiple companies, it's gotta be a specialized company, you just can't call somebody down, you know. You know, somebody, these people put in tracks, gotta do it directly, we've, we've done, we've done that months ago. Literally months and months ago, so we called them again to see what they're, I need, I'm like, look, I need, I need information, I need a hard quote. So when will that happen? Well, we can get a quote in X, I don't know, they need to get out here for it. In order for anything to happen, happen, is that we'll, a lot of things, one, you know, uh. The towns are gonna have to, it's in some capacity, have to agree that they need to do some type of bond, you know, whatever it is to. Um, eighty-twenty, let me just call that, just whatever, however it's gonna do to fix that track, they're gonna have to agree to that, that's happening at town meeting. That doesn't happen at a select board meeting, so you, you know, whether it be full town meeting, whether it be the straight town meeting in next year, all depends, right? Um, okay, we are parents, I said this to the, the person I spoke with today, you are taxpayers. You are voters, they're used to me asking for money, um, and so it's gonna, it's gonna take folks to be like, hey. This is what we want, now, to be fair, Templeton, uh, the finance committee has signaled that they would love to fix that. They, they would love, and they asked basic numbers like, what would you think it would take to fix, right? So we said a million dollars, because I, you know, we don't know. Something to that effect, it's probably going to be around there, um, I think that they're, they would love to be part of it, um. And, and they're thinking about that, but again, it's gonna take people to, to not press, I don't want to say that in a negative way. How about advocate, you know?
We have a couple that are ready.
Yeah, but it's both towns, so I mean, you know, I've said this before, I was helping the conversation a couple years back, uh, you know, you know. But about putting this on as a priority and pushing that through, because that's how it's going to be, because it's gonna definitely be. A town, the, the district, meaning the two member towns are going to have to probably take that on as then. You know what I mean? So, here's the good news, the district itself has done a lot of work on its own. We, we do a lot of our own, we go out and get our own loans, that Winchita, Boiler. The district did that, I believe, there's still, I wasn't here, but that's gonna be, that's paid by, by the district. The field slash bleachers when it finally falls off, that's a loan that we went out, we never asked the town, we don't ask the towns for anything that we. Think we can handle ourselves, the track won't be one of them, it, it'll just be too big, and plus we'll already have too much. Um, debt at that point, once we fix.
But am I, am I allowed to ask why we couldn't ask the town? Because if it was a bit town asset, a community asset that.
Sure, but, but this is the region.
Yeah.
So someone from Templeton's most, I'm, I'm going to make the wild assumption that they're gonna say, I'm not paying a hundred million thousand, I'm not gonna be a hundred percent, but. I'll pay my eighty-twenty, you know, you certainly can ask the town, it has to happen through town meeting, right through probably the born process. You know, on both, both sides, I think getting organized, I, I said, I offered that I will meet with the, with every parent. Um, uh, the selected group, et cetera, to kind of like. Put, you know, kind of put that in motion and talk about what that looks like, um, you definitely need to be a five oh three C group. Uh, you know, kind of your own booster club, because that, then at that point, it's powerful on your end, so if you are going to apply for grants and raise money. Um, when I worked in Munterburg, that tracked ten years to build.
From Munterburg, yeah, yeah.
I know, they sold cupcakes. Pies.
Yeah.
And game bars in the beginning, and they, that's not an exaggeration, now granted, they had, I believe it was Powell's, the Powells were wonderful people. Who did a lot of free work up there, um, were very, 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 very reduced in the very beginning, until the town finally. Which they should have done in the beginning, my perspective, uh, taken over the entire bill.
Right.
But they still had to raise money, they, they still had to be someone, you know, moving it forward, so, um. It, it can be done, and, you know, and I, I think it, it's absolutely needed.
And how do we move forward with starting a five oh three?
So how about after the meeting, I can certainly, I'll, I'll, I'll fill you in.
That would be great.
Yep.
Can I just add, I think Jen had a comment, I have a comment, yes.
So, I just, I just want to add, you know, to what, what Chris said in terms of facilities, uh, subcommittee has been looking at it for quite a while. And as Chris said, um, right now, we're in those, ba- basically we're in the study, uh, the study phase, okay? So in order for us to even present it to the town, or to the towns, or to the school committee, or wherever it is, we need to get through the study phase. To see exactly what is going on, what the subbase material is, what is wrong with it, are there any other drainage issues underneath there, what else needs to be done? As well as coordinate that with all the other work that's going on, and that's, that's the process that we're in right now. We're waiting for the contractors to get back to us with that, once we have that information, um, you know, I'll guess. Then, you know, we'll share, we'll be, we'll be looking for people, uh, to share it with, to support it, and we'll develop a. Uh, presentation at that point that we can take that to the next step. Um, in a, that's basically where we are, currently.
Thanks Jen, um, and so my comment sort of piggybacks on what Dr. C is saying as well, first, I thank you for coming, it's so nice to have people come. And, and, you know, interact with us, um, I think sometimes when people come, they, they sort of feel like, you know, I'm gonna. State my case in the school committee, you are literally preaching to the choir, that this, this committee is very school, teacher, community board. Um, and so your concerns are our concerns as well, um, and Dr. C, you know, said town meeting. We try so hard to encourage people to be a part of that, because that's where all of the important things that we need to do as a school district are happening. We're trying to pass a budget right now that just keeps teachers where they need to be and gets more teachers in where they need to be. Um, and we know that the people in the town want the athletics available for kids as well, town meeting is where that. Needs to happen, um, I don't know if you saw the video that was just put out and shared on some of the pages, the students were very good about sharing. Information about how town meeting works and how important it is to be a part of it, um, it's wonderful. Um, and I'm just, I'm really hoping that we get more people at these meetings, at town meetings, so that we can really do the work that we want to do. You are literally preaching to the choir right now, like, we are with you, those are the things that we want.
I just want to add that we've been, we've been chasing this for a while, and we just honestly, we gave up hope. To fix both things at the same time, because we knew that now we're one plus X, what, you know, so. We, we decided to do what we needed to do in terms of a playing field, because we, we only have one athletic field, as everyone knows, it's spread out back. Um, and we need, we needed another, um, like frankly, because that field is not gonna make it. Uh, because it's, it's got too much, it's got too much action on it, right? So that's why we need another field, so I don't want anyone to think this was just kind of like, uh, we, the facilities committee is, we have gone around, went around about this. In two thousand nineteen, we were really gonna be ready to approach, uh, as they say, but, um, that's when. You know, uh, the override failed, they closed Phillips and, and we cut six teachers and then COVID happened, it was like. We're not, we're not fucking track now, we're kind of dark, you know, ventilation, et cetera, so. But F media, I certainly could just fill you in on how that other, the other piece of it works, but we are, I, I hate the idea that the town spent so much money. Um, and one, quite frankly, I don't think the product was a good one, uh, the field was never game ready. It could, it never saw a varsity level game because it was not appropriately. It's too crowded, and the track worked for a while, obviously, but, you know, the type of maintenance that it took, for whatever reason, no one did anything with it, so.
Thank you, um, after what you said, but really, um, Hillary and Jackie, thank you for coming, because people don't come to our meetings and. You know, we get, um, summaries of things and, you know, what's going on, but it's really nice for us, I feel. To hear from, you know, parents and community members directly, um, what I would say, because you guys sound like you're ready. Ready, rally.
We have parents that are talking, we have kids.
I know, we have, like, we do, we have a hundred parents.
You guys are here tonight, which is great.
Yeah.
We have a meeting next Wednesday, if you wanna come, there's more of you, please come, um, but then also in May, right? Both Philistine and Templeton, our town meetings, um, go.
Yes.
Sit together, get, you know, I mean, there's rules about like what you can and cannot do and.
Right, well, that's the thing.
But let's, or, let's go, let your purpose, your focus.
Right.
Get out there to community members.
Yes.
So, um, I just encourage.
Get out there to committee members, yes. So um I just encourage.
We're ready. Walking through the hallway, like, Chase, where's the Kiva?
On the video online with our students and Dr. C explaining, like, it's, it's so well done. I know that I keep bringing, going back to this, but it really in, uh to, to have students take on those roles, like, it was just, it's amazing. It's not a long video. Um and it's a really.
It's on the Facebook page.
Okay, great. So yeah, it's on the Facebook page. I think I shared it this morning on like the Templeton Philston one. Super proud of those kids, so, um yeah, check it out if you can. If you can find it online.
And my last comment was, I too, when I was in high school, we had a whole track situation. I feel like it was the whole four years, like, you know, that was in Westford. Um so I can relate, I can understand.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and they, the parents did form, they raised money. And I remember, you know, once it was built and beautiful, it was like, ah, don't it was like this beautiful, you know, uh thing that nobody wanted to touch, you know, but yeah, people were very proud of it. So it can be done.
Yes. Um so I will just remind everyone that our next meeting is Wednesday, May first at five thirty. Um it does look like we have reason to go into next. No, we don't. Okay, then if we don't have um an executive session, then we, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, but, yeah, so then, motion by Sean, second by Heather. Um any personal comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Now I say yes, unanimous that we are ending our meeting. Yes.